So I'd like to call tonight's regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, February 20th, 2019, to order. Can we start with a roll call, please?
Jeremy Ratliff. John Smith.
Here.
Maria Volpe.
Here.
Linda Yingling.
Here.
Lux Ashbeck.
Here.
Paul Prue.
Here.
Brett Waller.
Here.
Eric Geis. Kevin Blake.
Here. We all rise as we're able for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Merrill Area Public Schools Board of Education meeting. MAPS respects the role our elected board members serve in the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students a safe learning environment and the highest levels of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation for all in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sample. Kimmy, do we have any requests for public comments this evening? All right. Hearing no forms for public comment at this next stage, we will... Board would like to do recognition. First party would like to recognize tonight as Pam Suaki. She's a new teacher at Jefferson Elementary, always being recognized by your peers for the superb job she is doing. She's one of the first to volunteer when an extra hand is needed and supports all the students in the building. Kudos to Pam. Would you like to...
Well, I'm just honored by this. I'm so thankful I was able to come back and teach here after I finally figured out what I wanted to do. Born and raised here and could be happier to be back. And I couldn't do it without our awesome team at Jefferson and our administration and all the administration and all the support they give all the time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next this evening, the board would like to recognize Melanie Hagemeister, who was selected as the Wisconsin VFW District Seven winner of the 2018-2019 Smart Mahr VFW National Citizenship Education Teacher Award at the elementary school level. District Seven consists of eleven counties located throughout central Wisconsin. Way to go, Melanie.
Thank you very much. And I do write something that I would like to... I am very humbled and honored to have received this award. With that being said, none of these events which led to my being nominated would have been possible on my own. All of the Kate Goodrich team involved, as well as community members supporting these events, were critical to ensuring their success. I would also like to thank all those involved with classrooms, educators, Veterans Day programs, a doctor platoon and soldier, Honor Flight fundraisers, and Portraits of Bravery for their support, input, and help in making each one of these events successful. So, thank you.
Next, we'd like to take a moment and recognize Kim Sample, who was selected as the Veterans of Foreign Wars, the VFW Schmidt, Manic Donner Post 1638 Citizen Education Award winner, as well as being recognized for the Portraits of Bravery project. Thank you and way to go, Kim. Share a little bit about our portraits.
Portraits of Bravery, I work with just with the graders. And we actually invite veterans into the classroom. So, we had nine models again this year. So, they are live models. So, they come in and they spend selected amounts of time, hour here and there. And the kids actually get to paint them as they are in life. So, it's real special for both of the groups. The kids also pose questions. They have a ready reflection of this veteran and their interests and where they've been in the world and those things. So, it's a real interactive kind of piece that we do in the art studio. We also do a special schedule for them as well. So, this is our second year that we've done that and we have been requested to continue that. So, maybe we'll keep that going a little bit.
Thank you, too. Next this evening, the board would like to recognize Vaughn Saunders, MAPS School Psychologist, for coordinating and presenting a KTEA III training session for special education staff. He recognized the need for this online assessment and developed a presentation to in-service special education staff on the implementation of this assessment. Thank you for going above and beyond, Vaughn.
I do hope it works.
Excellent.
So, this is my first year at MAPS and I've worked in a very different district. And the culture here at MAPS is very special in that in the buildings I work in and the people I work with, it's very positive, collaborative, supportive. And there's also a level of autonomy provided to the staff that I think is really excellent. And it's because of that autonomy and support from administration and other coworkers that I was able to pursue this KTA training and develop it for staff and administer it to staff. So, I appreciate the culture here.
Thank you. Any representation from the dance team? Next, we'd like to recognize this evening the Merrill Dance Team for taking first place in the region for their hip-hop and third place in jazz at the Wausau East High School on Saturday, February 2nd, both of which qualified them to perform at State in lacrosse on Saturday, February 9th, ending one point short of placing at State. Congratulations to the Merrill Dance Team members and Coach Rosengren. Is there anybody here tonight? Let's get that to Mr. Murray. All right. Next on our agenda is the Student Board of Education representative report. We have Abe Akey with us this evening as our student board rep.
All right. I hope. So, going on with high school right now, we have a lot of sports. As you said, the dance team qualified for State. Boys' basketball is currently leading conference. They won last night against Spash here at home. Girls' basketball and hockey are also ongoing. Hockey's just wrapping up early. And wrestling just ended with five people making sectionals this year, which is quite good. As you can see, Bella's not here with me today and that is because the ATT was today and she said she was just exhausted, so she... Which I understand fully. Currently as well, there's musical practice still going on. Musical is first weekend of April. This Saturday is the Solo and Ensemble Festival here at Merrill. The band acquires students, all prepare songs to sing or play for judges and you get scores and they can go on to the state level. And then also, I believe next week is Winter Fest. Winter Fest at the high school is a day where it's just a nice, like, relaxing time where you can have fun. I like it a lot. They have like the badminton contest, which I'm always really excited about. And you have field trips. And this year, they have free basketball, which I would say...
All right. Any questions for Abe on anything going on at the high school for activities? All right. Thank you, Abe. Next on our agenda this evening, I'll turn it over to Dr. Sample for the administrative reports. Dr. Sample?
Thank you. The spotlight on education has to do with the AGR mid-year update. AGR is Achievement Gap Reduction, and I know that you can see the report there. There's two different ways to approach achievement gap reduction. One of those is by limiting class size and the other one is the instructional coaching model. And we've opted for the instructional coaching model. Two instructional coaches at Kate Goodrich. Each of them provide one day each at Maple Grove. And then we've got an instructional coach at Washington and one at Jefferson. So, it gives a little bit of background of what those are and then you can also see the reports from each one of the four elementary programs down below. Any questions at all regarding the AGR mid-year report? Okay. Next is the Pine River School for Young Learners, their monthly data and also their rating scale for early childhood. Any questions for Jill Seaman on her monthly report or early childhood rating? Karen's Director of Special Ed and People's Services report is next. You can see some of the highlights from the last two months there. I should note that most recently, there was a school psychologist job fair in which it was very worthwhile for her to attend. She actually had seven interviews, just on-the-spot interviews of people that were interested in coming to Merrill as a school psychologist. And so, that was very good. A lot of times, we go to job fairs and we'll have people stop by and... But they don't express that much interest. So, it was nice that we had those kind of numbers for school psychologists. Any questions for Karen's summary report? Next, you'll see Cindy Heinz's report, Director of Human Resources. And that is her summary. Any questions for or regarding Cindy's report? Also from Karen, People's Services, we have the second Friday in January enrollment. As you know, we collect enrollment on the third Friday in September and then the second Friday in January. So, you can see those numbers there. They're remaining about stable. We are, have been, and will continue to look at next year's kindergarten enrollment so we can start projecting those numbers for next year. Find the Food Service Participation Update for the month of January from Laura. Mr. Dasher has the monthly budget update. Any questions on the monthly status report from Mr. Dasher? Kesha's report is next. You can see the report that's anywhere from the Apple Professional Learning, mid-year check-ins, and how her team is progressing, professional development. Lots of things going on in the world of technology. Any questions for Kesha? Superintendent's report. You can see my monthly activities and meetings. And one of the things that I wanted to at least share was the State Education Convention attended by Kevin Blake, Eric Geis, Karen Baker, Dale Bergman, and myself. Found it to be very valuable. I was able to meet our new Superintendent of Public Instruction, Dr. Carolyn Stanford-Taylor, at our Large District Caucus meeting. Fantastic person. I've known her at DPI before that and it couldn't have gone to a better person. Very, very qualified, very positive about education. It was a really, really good conference with a lot to offer, a lot of inspirational keynote speakers and a lot of things that are very beneficial to boards, superintendents, and administrators. Any questions on my report or the cabinet meeting topics?
Dr. Sample, about ten years ago, I think it is, it was a joint meeting between the technical schools and the K-12 at this conference. And we were told then, and both sides thought it was a great idea, that we were going to do it again. And nothing's ever happened. Have you heard anything or you know a move?
I have not.
We'll look at it from our end of the NTC and see what happens. I know it wasn't going to be every year, but every other year or a couple of years. The even years were in Madison, so maybe something needed more years.
Sure. Oh, I think that'd be great.
It was a good session. There was a lot of good conversation back and forth.
Yeah. And we're all in it for the same reason. I think that would be a great partnership. I will. I will find out about that. And that's it for the administrative reports.
Thank you, Dr. Sample. Next on the agenda this evening are the committee reports. We'll start off with the Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee. The draft minutes from last night's meeting were attached. Maria is the chair as well as other committee members are here. Is there any questions for the Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee members? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to the Finance HR Committee. The draft minutes from the February 6th, 2019 committee meeting, we're forwarded to you guys as well. John Smith, the chair, and other members of the committee are available for questions. Is there any questions for the Finance HR Committee this evening? Hearing none, the next committee would be the Facilities Committee. Draft minutes from the February 6th, 2019 committee meeting were attached in your board packet. Myself as chair and other members of the committee are available for questions. Does anyone have any questions for the Facilities Committee this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Policy Committee. It did not meet in February and was rescheduled to March 14th, 2019. Question in regards to that topic, John?
Yeah, I was wondering whether the Policy Committee can consider rescheduling their meeting ahead of the next regular agenda committee meeting, uh, the regular board meeting, which is on the 13th. There's two policies from Finance, Human Resources, that need to go to Policy before they can come here. And if you have your meeting the day after the regular board meeting, we won't see it until April. So, I don't know if you can bump that up a week?
What's the calendar look like?
Andrew, do you have the schedule for everyone's availability yet?
And we don't have to decide tonight. I just want it to be considered just so that the Finance HR stuff can get to the board in March rather than April.
I know we looked for the Curriculum Technology Pupil Services meeting. Dr. Sample, we could have Tammy look into that tomorrow and send out some invites or do some inquiries via phone or email. That would be great.
Sure. Just CTP meeting did fall over as pre-verse.
Right. We're going to have to review that as well.
The other thing that I was just... I don't think we really realized that last night when we were talking about it. So, perhaps we want to bring that back a week or at least not during the spring break to make sure that we get that in.
And to review, Maria, if you think that that needs to be before... We have a short turnaround for the next board meeting, as you're aware. But if there were some things on there that need to be discussed as Mr. Smith is raising for policy as well. And any suggestions there by the committee, all the committee members? Let's try to get that happening also.
Yeah, if we could address that. I just didn't realize last night when we set that meeting that it was over spring break. So, I have a feeling we're not going to have a quorum by any means. So, if we can find a earlier date, the better.
We can add that as well. That would be appreciated. Any other comments or discussion on the committee report?
We do have one question about the Curriculum Committee. I was a audience member last night and there were a couple of items that were motioned to be forwarded to the regular board. Did they make it to this agenda?
They did. They were on the agenda in the event that they were going to be forwarded. If they weren't going to be forwarded, they would have been skipped over.
It would have been either skipped over or asked to be tabled.
Did you have the conversation on hunter safety? Is that on tonight's board agenda?
That one was not.
That's going to go to March.
That'll be March with the summer school agenda item.
Okay.
So, that one is not...
I know there was a deadline mentioned and that's just what I wanted to verify, that we're not jamming up the March deadline for the...
Any other two I see?
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order on committees? And I'll move on to unfinished business. That was Alice Training for Students. I know that was discussed last night at Curriculum Technology and Pupil Services also, but it was asked to be reviewed. Safety Committee had not met in February in its meeting to start off March. So, that will be reviewed. It does go through all the different subcommittee meetings, including safety facilities, that it has been reviewed at. Anyone have any discussion points at this time to go through on that topic, Maria?
Just wondering, Kevin, and you know my frustration with the fact that this has dragged on for quite a long time. So, I'm wondering if it would be appropriate at this point in time, because we did not have a motion back in March of 2018 to ensure dates and for this to be done in a timely manner. So, I think it would probably be appropriate at this point in time to make the motion to ensure that it's incorporated at the latest in the 2019-2020 curriculum.
Okay. I'd like to make that motion. Then Maria, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second to Maria's motion? Second by Linda, do we have any discussion or questions on Maria's motion?
Can I hear the motion read back to... From Tammy's perspective?
Motion by Volpe to ensure that it's incorporated at the very latest in the 2019-2020 curriculum.
Can we change "it's" to "Alice Training"?
For students?
I'm sorry, I was just typing.
That's all right.
Tammy, I said it that way.
Cue the video.
All right. Any other questions or discussion on the motion and the topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next, we will move on to Board of Education business. We have first topic there is approval of Head Start Community Assessment. There's a topic summary sheet attached from Jill Seaman and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? John?
I recommend a motion to approve the 2018-2019 Community Assessment.
Motion by John, second by Jeremy. Do we have any discussion or questions for Mrs. Seaman tonight? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next topic on the agenda is approval of the Head Start Transportation Waiver. Topic summary sheet was prepared by Jill Seaman and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Jeremy?
Recommend motion to approve the Head Start Transportation Waiver for 2019-2020 school year.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Brett. Any discussion or questions on the motion or that topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item is the approval of the Head Start Grant. Topic summary sheet was put together by Jill Seaman and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
I moved to approve the 2019-2020 federal Head Start Grant.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second? Second by Brett. Any discussion or questions for Mrs. Seaman on this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next topic is the approval of the Federal Cost of Living Adjustment Supplement, also known as COOP. And the attached, we had an attached topic summary sheet from Jill Seaman and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion tonight? Jeremy?
I recommend a motion to approve the 2019 federal COOP supplement.
Motion by Jeremy, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Maria. Any questions or discussions on this topic or motion?
I just have one question for clarification. What is the acronym or the acronym COOP stand for?
The Cost of Living Adjustment for the... At the federal level? Anything you would like to add on that, John, for further... Think that does cover that? Any other questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next topic this evening is the Boys' Hockey Co-op Approval for 2019-2020. Attached was a topic summary sheet prepared by our Activities Director, John Miller, as well as we had a letter from Wausau Newman Catholic School and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
I moved to approve the Co-op for Boys Hockey with Wausau East and Wausau Newman Catholic for the 2019-2020 school year.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Maria. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Start with Paul.
I heard this on the reading. And just to curiosity, how it's going to be titled? On the radio, it was titled "The Wausau East Co-op", giving rise to the idea that it's strictly a Wausau East program. And I think we need to stress that this is a three-way somehow. I thought there was a name for the hockey team.
The Blue Jacks.
Yes, okay.
I'm glad we have blue first.
Yeah. So, anyway, just to curiosity, how that came out?
I believe they're currently going by East Maryland United, if I'm not mistaken.
That's what I was going to say. East Maryland United. Now, we're going to have three of them.
That's very interesting. Is there a way we could postpone this until next month in general? Maybe Coach Marlowe or Mr. Murray could be here speaking to the board. I just personally, I've had some, I've heard some, I guess, I'm not substantiating, but some rumors about some challenges that the program faced when they first merged with Wausau East. Some organizational challenges and coaching challenges they faced. And I see there's really nobody here tonight that can speak to that.
Mr. Murray is at a Activities Director function, so he did apologize for not being able to attend. Mr. Murray, could you address Mr. Atlas's question?
Yeah, so, the nature of any co-op, whether it's hockey or anybody, co-op is to take two programs that by themselves do not exist. And so, East approached us a couple of years ago. We had enough students for a varsity level program, including freshmen, which can be kind of paralysing the varsity program. And so, but we didn't have enough for J. D. So, we put the two together and like with anything, any co-op should have their bumps and moving and going things and travel issues, facility issues and...
As against those kids that worked out there being from early days, are you rough dealing with these?
Yeah, as good as they can get. You know, we face things like days where we'll have early distance, like for snowboarding. And so, their guys can... You know, you're always going to have those kind of thing. You have two parent groups that, of course, have their interests in their whole new school programs. And sometimes it's tough to put two different parent groups together. We share the facility at Ice Time with Mark Center and at Meritown Park. And Meritown Park also shares a request. And so, there's always those kinds of things. I don't know if those things will ever hold, honey, but John, I'm very well with my friends out here at East, they're AD and they make this work.
Okay. Yes, last question again, as I know in the first organized Blue Jack program, there was a co-coaching system where they had two head coaches. Now, it's down to one. It has to remain just one coach and then actually assistant coaches, correct?
Yeah, so that was one of the bumps. So, if you have two head coaches, you really have no head coach?
Right. Now, state of safety with a virtual...
Newman approaches because they had two speed athletes.
Great.
Can I just ask?
Go ahead, Linda.
It's just a quick question and it's probably simple. So, for the coach, the head coaching position, how does that work with funding? So, does... position, how does that work with funding? So, is Newman pitching in, is East pitching in, Merrill pitching in, or how does that all fund together?
Yeah, so currently it's a fifty-fifty. I think what they'll probably do in the end is they'll probably base on the number.
One last question, I guess.
Jeremy?
Picking back up what Linda just asked. In terms of coaching, like right now, Mr. Marlowe is the coach. And now, and I've always been curious about this also. We had East on board, and now we're bringing Newman on board. So, in the event, there's another coaching change, could there be a possibility where we'd be looking, interviewing candidates from both Newman, we, East, and Merrill?
Certainly, yeah. It was very possible that we had the coach currently.
It's my understanding that one of Mr. Marlowe's assistants is currently from Wasa East, correct?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Smith?
Wouldn't it be safe to say that the reason this even is being discussed is because there's two kids at Newman that want to play hockey?
That's exactly it.
And we would like them to play with an established team that we already have. So it's really not Newman as an institution coming forward and saying they want to be part of it, but just two kids that need a place to knock a puck around.
Yep. And should be pointed out that the WI requires every year to show that we cannot be a standalone program. And so, if any kind of our numbers blossom, and we have no, we just have our own standalone system, we're not going to have a co-op.
Paul?
That's a good question. I would say on hockey, it's usually like you have probably three lines, which would be nine, two goalies, eleven, and a handful of defensemen. So you'd probably be in somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty. Ideally, you'd want to be north of twenty.
And Newman doesn't have no facilities. There will be three facilities on the mix, and I'll just be the same two, the Merit Park and, or Arena.
Merit Park.
Merit Park, yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
No other questions or discussion? Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Thanks.
Motion on the table, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on the voice vote. Next item on the agenda is a discontinuation of CISA IX 2019-2020 contract for the NAC, the Northern Achievement Center, and implementation of a MAPS program to provide a self-contained program for students with cross-categorical needs. There was an attached topic summary sheet from Karen Baker this evening and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
I move to approve the two 1.0 FTE Special Education teachers and four 1.0 FTE assistance to continue to provide a self-contained program for students with cross-categorical needs.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Jeremy. Any questions or discussion on this topic? Nubs, can I ask Karen to come up to the microphone and the table, please? Thank you, Karen. Go ahead, Nubs.
Just, just on the funding, are we responsible for any of this, or most of this reimbursed by somebody else?
Let me give a little history. We are contracts with CISA IX for these services, and we've done this for probably around nine years. And in the contract to CISA, we actually pay for the teacher salaries, we pay for the assistant salaries, we pay those $50,000 in administrative costs that CISA charges out. So with MAPS taking the program, we will still be paying out salaries, but we'll be paying salaries for MAPS, not salaries and above, and on cost. And then the other option, right now at MAPS, other districts contracting CISA to send their students. The only way that our cost goes down in the contract is if they're outside students. But it's a very, it's unknown every year how many students there might be. With MAPS taking the program, again, we would sustain the costs, which we already are sustaining through MAPS, and then with seats available, we would also offer out to other districts, where then those fees would become directly to MAPS.
It's really a wash. We already sending money up to CISA that we're going to be paying our own, doing our own program.
Yes, and financially, the projection is we'll run out of budget. And as it is right now, we have a lot of oversight of the program because we are right here on the site.
I did have, I guess, clarifying question there. Number of times we call that flow-through dollars versus general fund. Could you explain that? I heard that at the committee level. I don't know if everybody has heard that term. You just.
Flow-through dollars are the IDVA monies, and those would be the Special Education Fund. And those are the funds that come into the I O R C, and they take care of preschool, early childhood, kids, and rest.
And also, when we're talking about becoming a self-contained program for the students here, that being that was provided through CISA IX, there were some employees from CISA IX, of course, as you talked, they could apply for these positions if they choose to be employed by MAPS versus CISA IX. Is that correct?
Absolutely. They are at free will to apply and encourage to apply.
Good. That's my questions. Brett, did you have a question?
I guess you kind of answered the first point. Earlier down the process, once you kind of know, you have to get something, something like that, that one will get a more of a final number on what this costs versus what we're spending. I'm just curious if you know. So like if, so we're adding two, two full-time staff, we're estimating that it's going to be a wash? Do we actually know or how close we're going to be to net zero, or?
We don't know how close we're going to be, but do know that by paying our CISA contract, and part of that contract were the employee's salaries and benefits, we also had to pay on top of what their salary was. So, we don't know because we don't know who we're going to hire, because we want to hire the best people as far as that goes. But I'm confident we'll be fine.
Actually, John, then we'll come back to Nubs.
NAC is a program that students who fall out of traditional educational settings are directed here. Is that a correct statement from other districts, perhaps, or?
For our students, it would be an IEP decision where the traditional classroom has not been successful, and there needs to be a greater focus on behavior modification as well as academics. And then other districts, similar situation.
So did CISA IX contribute to directing students here, where we'll have to take over the, almost the promotion or the, that we have the availability to receive it? Like, how did the student get referred to Merrill's program? And do we have a thing in place for the next step?
The students right now go through CISA IX, the special ed directors contact CISA IX. And the special ed directors actually in the CISA IX area that presently some students here know that, our hope is that we will have our own program, and then what they'll do is they'll contact me directly. And in all honesty, it comes through me via CISA.
Okay.
Currently.
So basically, moving forward, though, we would be responsible for the direct communication with the districts?
I would be.
Not necessarily promoting it or whatever, that the opportunity exists to use it to contact Merrill directly?
And they're fully aware.
Okay.
Because I'll be, in this discussion, we as directors meet on a regular basis and have that discussion.
Nubs, do you have a question?
Excuse me. Should the CISA IX employees decide not to come? Are you confident there's enough people out there to hire that are competent to do this, or will we be sure of that?
First off, for the CISA employees, they would need to apply like any other employees, so there would not be an automatic unilateral move. So they would go through the process, and I'm confident between if CISA IX personnel wish to apply and our other candidates will be able to fill the positions. In all honesty, doing it right now gives us the opportunity to post it in the prime season for posting.
Brett, follow-up question?
Yeah, this might be more towards Brian. Not that it's a big deal at the moment, I'm just curious, is there a way to kind of estimate this a couple months down the road and actually what it's going to cost and how close we're going to be? Is there, is there a way to estimate that at some point? I mean, maybe not now, but maybe six months down the road before our next, next school year that we'll start bringing the staff on and we'll have a better idea?
Right, we have to bring the staff on to find out what the costs are. But regardless, our costs are going to be less than what we're paying right now.
Right, right. I'm just curious if we could possibly bring that into like a finance HR meeting at some point, and we kind of know more?
It'll come in the personnel report, in all honesty.
Sure, I believe you're looking for a breakdown. We can go through that, just to make sure.
It'll be in there for sure.
Due diligence to put all the numbers together.
We just got the words out of our mouth. I think we're just kind of looking for a breakdown of what everything's going to look like to see what it really actually matches up for our CISA to what we'll be paying out of, I guess.
Sure.
Out of flow through.
Yeah, out of flow through and look forward to the good news at that time. Any other questions for Karen this evening?
I have one last one.
Go ahead, Nubs.
Did I, I heard you write you said you're paying like $50,000 for administrative costs? Are you going to absorb that, or do we have to hire an administrator?
No, that has to do just with their oversight of the program, they're doing payroll, et cetera.
So we don't have to hire another administrator?
No, no. You could pay me a little more, though, if you're overseeing.
I smell an assistant.
No, 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 don't need an assistant. Actually, this will be less work, in all honesty.
Any other questions or discussion on the motion? Alright, hearing none with the motion on the table, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, Karen.
Next item on the agenda is an additional 1.0 FTE Special Education Aid needed at Pine River School for Young Learners for the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year, which is 28 hours per week. There is an attached topic summary sheet from Karen Baker and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
I recommend a motion to approve the 1.0 FTE Special Ed Aid Position, 28 hours at Pine River School, for young learners to be funded through sped full through dollars. This will be for the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year.
Motion by Maria, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Jeremy. Do we have any questions or discussions for Karen?
Yeah, is that, oh, okay, nevermind. Nevermind, looking at the wrong one.
Alright, fair enough. Any other questions or discussion? John?
My version of 1 FTE is 40 hours. What's 28?
28 because it starts in the fourth day of the year.
With the two sessions?
Okay.
Teachers meet on Mondays, but the aides aren't necessarily, they don't meet on Mondays because they're tight students.
So, basically, the aide Pine River for School for Young Learners version of 1 FTE is a 28-hour.
Yes.
Any other clarifying questions or discussion points on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion carries. Moving on in the agenda, the additional, for an additional 1.0 FTE Special Education Aid Position at Prairie River Middle School for the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year. The attached topic summary sheet was co-authored by Karen Baker and Ryan Martinovich, and had been recommended through the Curriculum Technology and Pupil Services Committee. Is there a motion this evening? Paul?
Move to approve the 1.0 FTE Special Education Aid Position at PRMS to be funded through sped full through dollars. This will be for the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year.
We have a motion by Paul, do we have a second? Second by Brett. Any discussion or questions for Karen or Ryan on this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you, Karen. The next topic on the agenda is Status of the Referendum Plan Maintenance Projects. It is an informational-only topic provided by Dale Bergman. He is out of the office. Any questions on this topic that we could forward to him, or anything for the good of the order to share that we could ask Dr. Sample on, or myself?
Good of the, good of the order, if I remember from the finance, from the Facility Committee, that $1.2 million of yet to be done has a deadline of, is it June 30th to get completed?
If it's to be allocated, yes, it has to be done by June 30th for the allocations for this year.
Right, just so that the board is aware that there will be a whirlwind of stuff done between now and June 30th, based on that pevy number.
Snow might not be bombing or doing cars.
They have $1.2 million to get at.
It's not very big, man.
Alright.
Any other questions or discussion on that? Thank you. We'll move on to the next topic, which is for the Merrill High School, the Emergency or Egress Lighting. There is an attached topic summary sheet also from Dale Bergman. Facilities Committee has a recommended motion. Do we have a motion on this this evening? Nubs?
I recommend a motion to approve the purchase and installation of LED egress lighting for Merrill High School.
Motion by Nubs, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Maria. Any discussion or questions on the motion or the topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion carries. The next topic on the agenda tonight is the replacement of starting blocks at the Prairie River Middle School pool. There's an attached topic summary sheet from Dale Bergman. Facilities Committee has reviewed and provided a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? John?
I'll move to approve the purchase and installation of new starting blocks for the pool at the Prairie River Middle School.
Motion by John, do we have a second? Second by Paul. Any discussion or questions on the motion or the topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion carries. Next item on the agenda tonight is the Snow Day Makeup Proposal. There was an attached topic summary sheet from Dr. Sample and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
I move to approve the makeup days on the proposed 2018-2019 calendar requirements established by Wisconsin DPA.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Brett. Any discussion or clarifying questions? Maria?
And this, it came before the CTV Committee last night, and we did recommend bringing the child here. However, this morning I got questions from two parents that I just need clarifications on. One of them is with regard to the eighth grade field trip. And if they, if they are, if the board had approved that back in June of last year to go to New York and Washington, so they will, it's my understanding, be meeting on June 10. So how will that affect their, how will that affect the days that they need to be in school? And my understanding is also that there's a conflict with some, a Boy Scout convention in Louisiana, perhaps, that might interfere, and just wondering how we'll handle that and make sure that everybody has their required days.
What's that with the eighth grade trip, please?
Well, the eighth grade field trip, it's certainly something on the radar, and it's certainly something brought up along with other stuff that gets planned at the end of the school year. Because of bullet strides, we don't adjust the dates. The kids, that includes students, right now, we will obviously not be penalizing them for anything that's going to be completed following that. The teachers, it really comes down to the planning. And so, making sure those students have what they, the expectation, what they need to have completed by that date. I need help staff. Those kids are still going to be thirty or thirty, thirty-nine, which are still going to be getting on the bus. Two staff members are leaving on June 10. So, there's, there's planning that does have to take place as far as classroom expectations for each class. So there's, there's planning that does have to take place as far as classroom expectations for each class. But certainly, that parents contacting you as well, sure can add one if I could be penalized for leaving. It won't have an impact on them, so.
But how do, how do we, and I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just, in my own head, how do we reconcile the fact that they'll be missing those days that were intended to be summer days as opposed to all the other eighth graders who are having to stay in class?
I kind of view it as-
Is it like makeup, Ryan?
Yeah, I kind of view it as more like a pre-planned absence type scenario, where we have students that they know they're going to be gone. You know, we have parents that because of their work schedules have spring breaks or have a trip that they plan. And that happens typically, you know, this time of year. We've had several students out in February for a week at a time. You know, it comes down to how, how's my kid going to make up the five days that we've been in session? Unfortunately, a couple of the plans, we had so many snow days that they came back and were celebrating because they only had, you know, two days of makeup to do. So we view it as a, almost like a pre-planned situation, where we know that here's a thirty-nine kids or forty kids that are going on the trip. What do we have to do to make sure that they have their coursework and everything completed to, you know, an acceptable standard before they leave, so.
So generally, they'll have to do all their work before they're gone?
Before they're gone.
Right, because they've already paid for this.
Yep, yep, there's large amounts of money involved here and, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And from Dr. Sample or Ryan, any of those trips that you're talking about would be handled in the same?
Yep.
The Louisiana Boy Scout trip?
Yep, yep, because they're all very similar.
Same thing, pre-planned absences.
Yep.
Would it be true to say that as a, as a district and a board, our responsibility is to schedule the time on the calendar? But as a parent and a student, they still can execute their right to excuse their kid to go to Disney World if they want in the last two days and there's really nothing we would ever do about it?
Unless there was excessive absences, but I'm not going to stand in front of parents saying, no, you can't take a family trip in the case of where, because parents do that because I know it's spring break, blackout dates, whatever. Colleges are there during that time and so parents do take vacations outside of that.
We keep, we keep adding dates because of more snow days. It doesn't affect anything because then the parent is just inherently saying, and I excuse them that day, and that day, and that day. You know?
But the access is still there.
Up to ten days, right, or something like that?
Yep.
Right, and I guess the concern just was that was brought to me was the payment that had already been made and they weren't going to be losing any money.
No, no, none, none.
It's a great education.
Because it was, it's several thousand dollars or a lot of money.
Right, but we, you know, the other thing to take in perspective here, that trip is highly educational.
Oh, sure.
Our kids get more out of that trip. You know, at least the students that have been involved with that and some of you know that, because you've had family that have gone on it. But, you know, our social studies teachers, it just, curriculum, it's involved. And it's, they get more out of that than sometimes sitting in the classroom. It's the real life, here it is, so.
You're just going to say worse came to worse and you truly can't use some of those hours as educational hours and truly they are going on a trip and it's not a trip where it's all, you're going out and having fun and games. They are like, from the moment they leave here and the moment they get there, they are out and they're, I mean-
It's very scripted.
All the historical, you know, museums, when they're learning about all that stuff. So I mean, if worse came to worse, would you use some of that trip for two hours or not?
I can't because it would have to be offered for all, but can we, can we support all going?
And who would be needed? A lot of times they believe, and I don't want to speak for the sample or the staff, but a case by case basis if they're in that situation, but normally that's been covered in the manner that Mr. McAdams is saying.
Well, yeah, I know, that's a lot, you know, in fact, it's, you know, they have to have more, I don't even want to say it, days.
You get it.
Yeah.
I kind of blanked it out, but you know.
I like that in the notes, the windows, the one extending the calendar.
Correct.
I speak on it.
All right. Any other discussion or questions on that particular motion topic? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is some technical corrections made through policy manual, throughout the policy manual, to change the district compliance officer from Gerald Byer to Brian Dashar. Just a reminder that for the bylaw zero one thirty-one point three, the superintendent is authorized to review and make technical corrections to policies that have already been adopted through normal rulemaking procedures. The superintendent shall inform the board of any such changes at the next regular board meeting. The following policies are being changed to show Brian Dashar as the district compliance officer. That would be policies twenty-two sixty, twenty-two sixty point one, thirty-one twenty-two, thirty-one twenty-three, thirty-three sixty-two, forty-one twenty-two, forty-one twenty-three, and forty-three sixty-two. So this is informational only and this is Dr. Sample sharing that information with us this evening. The next item on the agenda would be the Sierra Pacific donation for the MAPS Fab Lab equipment purchase. We did have attached to our board packet tonight a donation form and the information by the Fab Lab director, Josh Zaluzki. Being that their donation was valued at five thousand dollars, that puts it over the twenty-five hundred dollar limit set in the current policy seventy-two thirty, so the donation must come to the board's authority for approval. There is a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
Move to approve the donation of funds from Sierra Pacific valued at five thousand dollars for equipment purchase in the Merrill High School Fab Lab.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jeremy. Any discussion or questions on that motion or topic this evening?
I'd just like to pass on to the board, I had a chance to stop into the Fab Lab the other day. Spoke to Mr. Zaluzki and had a look at the final result. And to say I was blown away would be another statement. I highly encourage anybody who has a time to stop in and to take a look. I think it's a total of twenty-two pieces of state-of-the-art equipment, from gigantic printer to CNC presses to, I can't even get a name of everything. And just the little projects that he showed me that they've cranked out just in the few time, the short time they've been open, completely open and operational is just beyond amazing. So I highly encourage anybody to stop in and take a look, you'd be very impressed, I'm sure.
Any other discussion or questions on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion carries and goes forward. The next topic that we keep on here, just to keep everything in front of us with community conversation outcomes, Dr. Sample, would you like to highlight anything on your attached topic summary sheet?
Certainly, you can see that we have addressed in the last month six different areas from the community conversation priorities. One of the ones that was very worth mentioning is the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction inadvertently gave us some really nice publicity by using Jefferson's Data Wall on their DPI presentation page. So anytime DPI can recognize something like that for the entire state, that's something to be very proud of. So I appreciate that from our Jefferson staff. And then we continue to have community outreach. And while it may look brief, I have to stress that I'm extremely proud of all of our buildings and the community involvement that they have. They're learning about volunteerism and what it's like to give back and what it's like to donate. And so the community outreach, if you get a chance, look at the priorities and you can see the, that list is growing. That's probably one of our heaviest priorities that's been maintained and we continue to strive for. So excellent job by, by everybody. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, any questions on that update on community conversation outcomes? Hearing none, as we move forward in our agenda, I'd like to ask if anyone would like anything pulled tonight from the consent agenda? Otherwise, I'd be looking for a motion. Maria?
I move to approve the consent agenda items A through D, which includes minutes of the January sixteen, twenty nineteen, January seventeen, twenty nineteen, and February eleven, twenty nineteen meetings, claims, vouchers, and receipts totaling four nearly one hundred thirty-four thousand, three hundred thirty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. A personnel report and donations to twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty-two cents.
Do we have a second? Second by Linda. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions tonight? Paul?
January sixteenth, January seventeenth.
Thank you, the motion was approved with those abstentions. Anyone have any items for future meetings? I know we've talked about a couple of items already that we've made note of. Anything new for the good of the order for future meetings? John?
I know we're doing a policy review coming up where we're going to add policies into committees to be reviewed on a regular basis. And I think I noted that the bylaws would fall directly to the board was the plan. And one of the things I was wondering if the board would consider is policy one, or zero one five five is for committees. And we always have these ongoing discussions on what is a quorum? What do we do if we have to reschedule? Who's, who sits on it? Another thought I had is if, if you can't attend your committee, can someone sub on your behalf? That's a board member, can a officer sub on your behalf? I'm wondering if the board would entertain a look at that next month. I would be more than willing to put some draft stuff together so that we can get some more formal definition of what it means when we go into committee. And, you know, as the superintendent of voting member, is the director of finance a voting member? Because if we, if we discuss it and we create it and we adopt it as the bylaw, I think committees would be more, more functional once they assemble. Because quorum is a funny word, because if you have three people on a committee that are board members, two have to be there to have a quorum. But if you say that there's ex officio members or there's a member, a voting member that's part of the central office staff, you can get a quorum quite a bit faster. And I think having been on committees, everyone's saying aye anyways. So we have, we could, we could, we can formalize that process once and for all, so.
All right. Would you like to set a timeline, like you have that ready for the next policy meeting? Is that what will be appropriate?
Well, it would come directly to this board.
Directly to the board.
Because it's a bylaw and we can discuss it here next meeting.
Didn't know if you wanted any vetting by them, so okay. Just have that come directly, so I'll have that added on the next agenda.
And I'll take responsibility for some wordsmithing and, no, smithing. There's no such thing as word voloping that I'm aware of.
All right, thank you, John. Did you have any other items, or you have the four? Any other items for future meetings that you can think of at this time?
There's just a couple of, I think we need to list the policy in the CTP committee meeting, is that right?
Can you do that? Yeah, I missed that.
That's okay. I, I think we need to list the policy committee meeting, which is on three fourteen, and the CTP committee meeting, which is on three nineteen, in case we-
Hold down on the future meeting?
Yes, I'm sorry. I jumped apparently, Tammy, sorry.
I guess I have something real quick too. And I'm not sure if this makes a difference, but we did make a change to the hunter gun, snowmobile ATV wording. We made it, I think, hunter, was it hunter safety now instead? Instead of taking the gun out of there and put it in, because hunter and gun, I guess, we kind of felt they were the same thing. I don't know if that has to be changed or not.
That will be corrected. And the topic will be reviewed as we come into the next agenda also for summer school. Dr. Sample? That's correct, for summer school.
Yeah, I just didn't know that it had to be changed because we did make that change last night.
You get to take into account some of them. Any other items that we would like to have added for future meetings? If not, we'll move on. Just a reminder that attached on our, our board packet is also the board decision, the financial impact summary for our review. Just a reminder of the decisions that we make and what if they're, what the cost outcome potentially is to the district. A reminder to review that. There is a radio event scheduled tomorrow. Dr. Sample and I are on Blue Jay seven thirty AM radio tomorrow at eight fifteen in the morning. Future meetings, we have the strategic planning committee meeting on Wednesday, February twenty-seventh at six PM in the boardroom. Safety subcommittee meeting is on Monday, March fourth at twelve thirty PM in the boardroom. Facilities committee meeting is Wednesday, March sixth, twenty nineteen at three thirty PM here in the boardroom, followed by the finance HR committee meeting for Wednesday, that same evening, Wednesday, March sixth at four thirty in the boardroom. Maple Grove Governance Board meeting will be held on Monday, March eleventh, twenty nineteen at six thirty PM out at Maple Grove. The Head Start Policy Council will be meeting on Tuesday, March twelfth, twenty nineteen at five thirty PM at the Pine River School for Young Learners. The next regular board meeting will be Wednesday, March thirteenth, twenty nineteen at five thirty PM in the boardroom. And we will update everybody as we know, so check the website and social media for the policy meeting and the curriculum technology and pupil services meetings, dates and times.
I normally go from board meeting to board meeting and that's where I end it and then it's on the next and that's why they weren't included.
Thanks Tammy.
Those do get adjusted, we will, we will, sure. Those do get adjusted for some recommendations this evening and we will provide that information to the public. All right? Thank you. Future meetings. And at this time, we have a contemplated motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under section nineteen point eight five, brand one, brand C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Brand F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or investigation of charges against specific person or persons, except where area B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. And brand E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business on other competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The purpose of the closed session is to discuss the superintendent's performance evaluation or review administrators' compliance with school board policy. Do I have that motion this evening? Motion by Paul.
Second.
Second by John Smith. We have a roll call on that, please Tammy.
Jeremy Ratliff?
Aye.
John Smith?
Aye.
Maria Volpi? Aye. Linda Yingling?
Aye.
Natalie Ashford?
Aye.
Tom Thrope?
Aye.